Honorable Pernell Halona. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Halona's present.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Carl Russell Slater is present. Honorable Charlene So.
Delegate So, present.
Thank you very much. Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable Edison J. Wanika.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chair, we have four members, or five members up to the core.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Delegate Charlene So, could you lead us in invocation this morning?
Uh, Chair, I am most honored to do so, but I do have a sore throat, so, um, my apologies and, um, I, I won't be able to. Thank you.
Okay. Shinai, Delegate Begay. Could you help us?
Vice Chair, I don't see him. I think he got dropped.
Okay. Uh, Delegate Halona, could you lead us in inv- in an invocation?
Uh, sure. Uh, good morning, sir. I'll be happy to do that. Thank you. Well, add your own prayers and your own words. Here we are today, Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you for this beautiful, wonderful day you have given us today. Thank you for all the blessings you have given us throughout the we- throughout the year. We thank you, Lord, for the strength that you, you have given us to endure these terrible things that we have gone through. And we know that all that we have done, all that we will do is in your name. As parts of our world are reopening up across the country and around the world, we ask that you look at the troubles around the world and help to mitigate the situation here. Lord, we ask you to help the people that are out there. Bless them, Lord. Keep their hearts strong. And for all those who lost their loved ones, wrap your arms around their hearts, Lord, and comfort them. We ask you, Lord, that we, during this time, that you help guard our hearts and our minds and encourage our feelings, whether they're anxious, afraid, or helpless. And to continue to heal all those who are sick and protect those who are not. Lord, we ask you to protect and strengthen the brave people out there serving others on the front line of this pandemic. Lord, we ask you to give our leaders wisdom as they navigate through these terrible seasons. Let us hope that your truth and guidance will, will guide their actions. Lord, we ask you to unite the global churches to increase the generosity, faith, and love around a- all those around the world and around us. Lord, we ask you to restore the communities for the glory of your name and to rescue the people from depression, addiction, and other loneliness. Lord, we ask you to continue to transform us, let us spiritually renew, and we've experienced strength in our resolve to share your hope. Lord, we believe in your goodness and your land because you know that you are working our lives every day. Lord, calm our fears as we trust in you and come to do what you only can do. Lord, we ask all these blessings in the name of Lord Jesus Christ. We ask you, Lord, to bless all of those who have lost their lives and comfort their families who have lost their, their loved ones in the collapse of the building in Florida. Give them strength, Lord, to move forward and continue with their lives. And all of those around the world, Lord, and other countries, give them all strength and hope, Lord, to proceed forward to try to mitigate and wipe out the virus, Lord. We ask all these blessings in the name of Lord Jesus Christ as we pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us, Lord, not into temptation, but deliver us from every evil. I ask all these blessings in the name of Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Vice Chair? Thank you.
Vice Chair Leonard, we have Chair online now.
Okay. Shinai, Chair So, can I hand it off to you?
Do it as a long pass.
Over the mic.
Yes. Thank you. Forgive the background noise. I'm in a public place, uh, trying to get in the corner, but it's not working. Um, so, uh, with that, uh, committee, um, do we have any announcements?
None.
Um, Mr. Chair, this is Angelita Benali. Good morning.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of the, um, Health Education Human Services Committee, good morning. Uh, there's two or three, um, announcements I'd like to convey to the, to the committee. Uh, the first one is that Delegate Thomas Walker is going to be withdrawing his legislation, zero, one, zero, three dash twenty-one. And he sent that notice to Mr. Rico this morning. Also, the, um, the Windflow Hospital Indian Healthcare Center would like to present a report uh, to, uh, the Health Education Human Services Committee at some point if they could, if the committee would, um, can put them on the agenda in the future. Also, the third item is that, uh, Ms. LaShana So, the New Mexico Assistant Secretary of Indian Education, um, would like to, um, be on, place on Hess's agenda for Wednesday as a consideration. Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. I relocated into a different part of, uh, the conference room. So, um, committee members, based on that and based on the messages, um, let's do a recognizing guests and visiting officials. So folks on the line that are all slated to be part of this agenda, uh, today, if you're on the call, please introduce yourself to the committee.
Good afternoon. Uh, Shinai, I'm Alcini. Uh, my name is Losensio Tom. I'm the President of the Board of Directors for FDHB. Uh, just here for, uh, informational purposes and to answer any questions regarding the upcoming work session. Thank you.
Yate, Ben, Shinai, members, distinguished members of the committee, Leonard Chi, uh, listening and on the call this morning. Thank you.
Anybody else? When I got on the phone, they basically said there was more than twenty people on the call.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair. This is Michelle from Navajo Department of Health. Good morning, committee members.
Good morning, Chair. This is, uh, Pernell Pine with Navajo Nation C H R Outreach Program, listening in on the call.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning, uh, Shinai, uh, Mr. So and the committee. This is, uh, Wayne Claw from, uh, Navajo Landers in Home, listening in. Uh, have interest on, uh, the old business legislation, nine to five dash twenty-one.
Dr. Saja, this is, and, uh, distinguished community, committee meeting members. My name is Priscilla Benali with Navajo Nation Board of Education. Good morning to you all.
Good morning, Chairs. This is, uh, Calvin White with Department of Indian Education, Navajo Nation.
Morning, Chair. This is Jordan Nett City from DeBosba.
Yate, good morning, everyone. This is Alex with Navajo Nation Department of Justice.
Uh, good morning, uh, good morning, members of the committee. This is Matthew So with Department of Indian Education.
Good morning, Chairman. This is, uh, Melinda Vissel Siaco from the Office of the Speaker on the call. Uh, good morning, members.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. This is Ramona Antoniz with the Navajo Epidemiology Center, listening in.
Thank you all. Yate, she goes to the neck. Um, and appreciate, uh, folks on the call. So, uh, with that, uh, Ms. Angelita, uh, Angelita Benali, would you please, uh, review um, the proposed agenda with the committee? And, and I guess, based on your announcements, uh, go ahead and, uh, revise the agenda based on Honorable Walker's, uh, um, message. And, and that way we don't really have to do any amendments. If you would, uh, please do that in as you review the agenda with us. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair. And members of the Health Education Human Services Committee, you have your proposed agenda for the Health Education and Human Services Committee, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Special Meeting, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one at nine AM. Presiding Honorable Daniel E. So, Chairperson, Honorable Carl R. Slater, Vice Chairperson. The place is the, via telecommunications, Winter Rock, Navajo Nation, Arizona. One, call meeting to order, roll call, invocation announcements. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. None. Five, receiving reports. A is a school board, uh, appointment plan, uh, consultation schedule. B is a schedule of meetings to address the implementation of the Navajo Nation education sovereignty, including the implementations of the Ozzie Martinez, the state of New Mexico. C is a report with the Navajo Nation Council Audit Report of Trust Fund Principal Accounts, impeding the ability to meet the demand for the Navajo Nation Post-Secondary Financial Assistance and Scholarship Awards. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. Um, based on, um, the direction of the Chair and, um, Mr. Walker. A is, um, going to be, uh, legislation one oh three dash twenty-one, well, it has been withdrawn. And, um, A is going to be legislation number zero, one, zero, seven dash twenty-one. And then, uh, C is going to become B, which is to schedule a works, um, Hess work session regarding legislation zero, zero, nine, five dash twenty-one. Eight, close the meeting announcements adjournment. The next meeting is Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and it'll be, uh, the Health Education Human Services Committee's regular meeting. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Committee members, the proposed action is on your side of the table.
Motion, Wanika.
Sure. Second, Halona. Thank you, uh, Cecilia. Um, Honorable Edison Wa- uh, Wanika motions to adopt the, um, agenda, seconded by Honorable Pernell Halona. Any, uh, oh, Cecilia. Honorable Wanika.
Yeah, Chair, members of the committee, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a request to add an item to the agenda. Uh, found out that, uh, Annie Wanika Care Center was closed and, uh,'d like to get a report on that. And I think, uh, Mr. Wayne Claw from Chinny will be able to help us, uh, uh, explain the reason why that happened and, uh, to, to see what we can do. And I think, uh, we need to have, uh, Regina Yaze on the line because that's her direct responsibility. I'm just really concerned, uh, what is going on with those patients that were there. It is with Edoli. And then, uh, I have an appointment at ten o'clock, so I'm going to be leaving you guys for a little while. But I'll keep the phone on as long as I can, so I'd like to make that request. Or also, uh, we need to, uh, uh, schedule our, uh, meeting that we want to have in, uh, uh, Richfield based on the request of Honorable Paul Begay. So, esto, uh, van de vi. Thank you, Chair.
Honorable Halona, we have a request from the moving party to amend the agenda. Request accepted. Oh. Okay. Honorable Wan- uh, Halona, committee members, any other discussion? So the motion is amended to include, uh, two items. But Annie Wanika receives a report or an update on, uh, the closure of the Annie Wanika Long-Term Care Facility in Toye, Louisiana. And then to schedule a, um, visit to the Richfield Dormitory, um, facilities in Richfield, Utah. And to meet with the school board as well as the governing board of the dormitory. And maybe even the city officials of Richfield. Uh, Taylor, committee members. Any discussion? If, if not, Mr. Moes, uh, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Morning, everyone. Honorable Paul Begay Junior. Honorable Paul Begay Junior. Honorable Pernell Halona.
What's green?
Honorable Pernell Halona goes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater goes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Thank you very much. Honorable Edison J. Wanika, green. Honorable Edison J. Wanika votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Junior.
Thank you, Paul Begay, with screen.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Junior votes green. Chair, your vote of five in favor, zero opposed?
Uh, thank you, uh, committee members. So let the record show, five in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. So we go to item, um, reviewing and adopting the journal, there being none. We go to item five A, uh, regarding the, uh, apportionment plan. Um, let's see. Um, Ms. Benali, could you, uh, review that particular agenda item with the committee?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This item, um, according to, it, the request for placing it on the agenda is the School Board Apportionment Plan Consultation Schedule. And that's to, um, to, for the, um, Health Education Human Services Committee to schedule, um, um, I guess the consultation for, um, the, uh, appointment apportionment plan according to the Navajo Nation courts that was ordered regarding the school board case. And, um, I did, um, notify and send an invitation out to Mr. Louis Mallet. Mallet, uh, he's a intern with N G O J. As an update, um, because I believe that he had briefed the, um, committee in June. And, uh, and he would, uh, give the play as far as the, um, court proceed, like court, uh, request to the courts. I believe that was, um, that he was going to, uh, draft. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Ms. Benali. Uh, Mr. Mallett, Mr. Haven, and then, uh, Mr. Matthews, so, uh, Ms. Patricia Gani and Ms., uh, Alexandra Kinsella. If you could, uh, give assistance to the committee on how to one is to basically give a summary of the latest, uh, court action and the latitude that it gives to the committee. And based on those items, then the committee would, uh, basically discuss, uh, how to proceed on, um, the consultation hearings. Mr. Mallett, Mr. Haven.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. This is Louis Mallett. Uh, I'll defer to Mr. Haven and Dodi on, uh, the majority of, of this discussion for consultation. I've given my recommendations and they really haven't changed. Uh, I recommend not requesting any clarification from the court just to, uh, avoid, uh, any kind of a change in the order. Uh, so I'll, I'll be happy to defer to Mr. Haven and, and Dodi as far as when the consultation would start and, and in what way. Thank you.
Mr. Haven, are you on the call?
Uh, members of the committee, uh, good morning. Uh, Ron Heeden here on the call. Um, uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Mallett and, uh, uh, members of the, uh, committee and all members of the public that are listening in. Um, Ms. Kinsella as well, good morning. Um, I recall, um, at the report of, uh, Department of Justice at the last, um, uh, meeting, uh, regarding this particular subject, uh, there, there was some discussion on, on the or- court order. The one that I recall, uh, being discussed is the one, um, that was dated and signed on March, um, the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. And the title of the document there was, um, is, um, um, permanent injunction hearing. And, uh, uh, we can go into executive session if the Department of Justice recommends on this one. Uh, or else I can provide a very brief, uh, over, uh, not an overview, but essentially what I had stated at the time. And, and I certainly, uh, can go through some of my recommendations insofar as the substance of what I feel, um, should be, uh, provided in, in written format. A- and as I stated at the last meeting on the subject matter, um, as I recall, i- is that I'm, I'm will, I, I can prepare the resolution. The attachment will be Exhibit A. The Exhibit A is something that, uh, will explain the process in, in general, uh, in a general manner. And I can cover some of that in executive session if you want. And I can certainly, uh, provide and distribute what I have so far in written format, if that's okay with the committee members. I want to make sure DOJ is okay with that just as well. I haven't shared this with them, but I had assumed something would be prepared insofar as the substance as to what approach would be recommended to Hessy insofar as the substance of this. Well, um, what I'm talking about is, is, for example, the consultation period, how many days? Uh, you, you recall explanation made that it's going to be fifty-seven, no less than fifty-seven days, at least fifty-seven days. And the recommendation was made, why, uh, simply, uh, just go with sixty days or more. Um, so that type of thing. I can cover some of this in more detail, Mr. Chair, if you would allow me, um, to do that. Uh, again, here, this depends on what DOJ feels about it. If DOJ wants to provide some input on, on the approach insofar as the substance of some of the, um, provisions that, um, I would suggest being written for, uh, so it's, um, uh, adopted by the committee. A- and also that, uh, Department of, um, Indian Education is made aware of it. Uh, Department of Education would have a role insofar as your consultation process. A- and, and, uh, Department of Justice, um, I would recommend also have a role in, in, in the consultation pros- process and see what their recommendations are insofar as the week-to-week activities of what Hessy adopts a- and, and throughout this, uh, six, um, uh, the, uh, the period under, uh, the order, which is, uh, pro- approximately sixty days. So I, I'm gonna go ahead and stop there, Mr. Chair. Uh, do you want me to go ahead and distribute what I have so far? And I would prefer to have an executive session for purposes of, uh, distribution of the documents.
Committee members, what are your thoughts? For myself, you know, that court order is now a public document. And we just have to be, you know, we listened to this before. And I, and I think the committee is just ready to go with the consultation hearings. And we just, uh, I mean, we've had enough delay with the the court, the, the of the adverse parties. And so, as the court has stated, Plan Six is fine. And so that's the premise that the committee, uh, will go forward with. Uh, Mr. Haven. Um, Mr. Mallett, Ms. Kinsella. And I don't know if Mr. Atchad, uh, Data is on the call, but this is from the chair's, uh, view. But, uh, committee members, the issue is back to your side of the table again.
Chair, I, I thought we were at the stage where we were just waiting to hear the Dodi plan and that they were supposed to start this. Honestly, I thought this was supposed to start months ago. I mean, the order was issued a long time ago, so I, I kinda keep getting confused when we keep bringing them back. Like, aren't we just supposed to be hearing from Dodi at this point on how the consultation is moving forward? Did I get disconnected or are we still on?
Vice Chair, is Leonard, I still can hear you. Uh, Vice, uh, Chair's phone is on mute for some reason.
Chair, could you hear us? You're muted.
Okay, uh, the system keeps putting me on mute for some reason. And I'm having, uh, connection problems, so I'll move from where I'm at. But, uh, committee members, uh, based on the last report in June, um, I think, uh, it's up to the committee. They want to go into executive session and say, listen to the same issues that we listened to the last time. And the reason that, uh, this item was put on the agenda to, uh, start the, the scheduling the series of consultation. Even though the court ordered fifty-two more consultation hearings, um, I think the committee was, um, in agreement to go sixty, so, committee members. Back to you on your side of the table.
Good morning. Good morning, Chinna. This is Melvin Harrison with, uh, Navajo Board of Election Supervisors. Could I just make a comment real quick?
Satilla, every time you say that, we end up thirty minutes off our subject.
No.
Only if it's brief.
Yeah, really brief.
Right now, uh, so, apportionment plan is on the table of HESI. After the hearings are done, then the issue goes to the Board of Election Supervisors. Understand that.
Yes, we, I do understand that.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, it's Chinna, Chinna, I, 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 uh, the, um, Health Education and Human Services Committee, um, Ms. Benali, DOJ, Mr. Mallette, and Mr. Haven, others on the line. What I understood at our, our face-to-face meeting, that's, I just wanted clarification on that as well because I'm a little confused. This is, um, uh, Delegate Slater was saying. It was my understanding that the next step would be that Doty and DOJ, I don't know if that would mean Mr. Haven or Mr. Mallette and possibly someone from HESI to come up with a plan, or Doty and DOJ to come up with a schedule to present to HESI just as, uh, Delegate Slater had indicated. And that's what I, I sort of have been waiting for. And I, I actually talked to Mr., um, Mr. Mathewso. I, I met him, um, oh, I ran into him, not, not ran into him, but I, I, I saw him, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, and I asked him, have you guys discussed, uh, the scheduling of consultation? He says, no, I haven't heard anything about it. So, so I'm, I'm confused too. So I think that's where, from our face-to-face meeting, that's what I understood was that Doty and DOJ will come up with a plan to present to HESI. So I think that's what needs to happen. Thank you.
Satilla?
Oh.
Stay, stay confused.
Okay.
Right now, we're trying to come up with that schedule. Forgive me for being a little, um, short, but I, the, the main thing that's on the agenda right now is for the committee to say, let's go forward, let's do A, B, C, D, to meet the requirements of the law. Committee members, back on your side of the table.
But, but Chair, this is Delegate Slater. We, we already gave the direction to Doty to develop the schedule, so we should just be hearing the schedule from them.
Um, yeah, so, uh, what I'm asking is basically, you know... Okay, the committee, are we gonna do five agency hearings to open up the consultation? And then do we proceed with, uh, teleconference and Zoom meetings to fulfill the other, uh, days? And then at the end, do we then do five new face-to-face, uh, meetings, uh, based on the comments from the public or the school board? So that's where we're at. Honorable, uh, committee members.
Chair Solana?
Honorable Solana.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, committee members and all those who are on the call. Uh, I, I'm of the, uh, of the opinion, yes, that we need to go ahead and move forward through with, uh, with this, um, I, I thought we were gonna approve the Plan Six again and move forward. That's what the meeting was for today. Is that, uh, still the plan? Are we gonna be doing any more discussion? Or we proceed to adopt Plan Six again and move forward? That's where I thought the plan was to be. Chair.
Um, and, and again, the last meeting, we were reviewed that court order. The court order said Plan Six is fine. And the main thing that there, the court is saying, hold fifty-two more consultation hearings. That's where we're at.
Okay, Chair, I understand that.
So the issue is what kind of consultation? Zoom, teleconference, in-person? And when do we start? And when do we conclude? At that time, then the issue will be, um... The issue would go to the Board of Election Supervisors.
Chair, Solana?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so we don't need to be doing any more consultation then? We just want to go ahead and get the approval right now so that we can let the Board of Election Supervisors start to move on this issue? Do we need to make a motion or establish a motion for that procedure?
The...
Chair?
The court ordered at a minimum of fifty-two consultation hearings. And at the previous...
Days of consultation, not...
Okay, days of consultation, okay. So in that aspect, Honorable Solana, we schedule what days we will do consultation hearings? Honorable...
All right, Honorable Chair.
Uh, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess my recommendation would be, um, in order to have adequate public notice and get things in the paper, maybe start the first week of August. And then kick it off then, um, with the, I, I think you're recommending five agency, like town halls or listening sessions and do hybrid for those. And then, um, maybe have one town hall at the end of the sixty days and the committee could conduct that one. But the initial ones will be conducted by Doty. Um, and then direct Doty to have an online portal for submitting comments so folks can do it via email or like a web form, um, or, I don't know, maybe a recorded message. I don't know if that's possible. And then request that Doty summarize the contents of the five agency councils and then the sixty days of comments. I mean, the sixty days of comments could start as soon as there's notification, you know, in the paper and, and out there. But I, I just, I, I agree that there should be the option of some in-person, um, meetings. Though what we learned at the last one, it was just the same people going to the, the meetings over and over again. So that's my recommendation, Chair. But I think it really just comes down to how quickly, you know, Doty can put the notifications in the newspapers and get them on KTNN. So, um, that's, that's my recommendation. Now, I guess the latest would be the first week of August.
Okay. And, and committee, uh, I, I guess I'm, I'm, uh, at this point in time, I'm, I'm really kinda like, uh, um, let's put it on the table. Right now, there's efforts to strip the committee of its authority to do the school board apportionments. And, and so it's, uh, the, the reason I'm doing this is to make it part of the public record. And so, um, you know, in, in, in effect, some of this consultation won't be, um, the comments possibly be, could be submitted with ulterior motives. And so the committee, uh, what I'm saying is let's get this thing rolling right. Uh, let's, uh, I guess authorize Doty to establish the portal. And we, uh, either do it by legislation to open the consultation period or just as a, um, an order, uh, to open the consultation hearing period. And then at some point in time, maybe the first week, maybe the end of this month, to do the in-person. Um, that would be my thoughts, committee members.
Chair, if I may?
Uh, go ahead, Honorable Slater.
So is your recommendation that we would have Doty commence immediately with accepting comments or, or that another, or that we, as the committee, would start accepting comments?
Um, I guess in, in a joint effort, how can we have legislative staff and Doty staff coordinate, um, the receipt of those comments?
Well, one option would be to ask the IT folks to just create an email address for accepting comments. They could post it to the Navajo Nation Council website. Excuse me. And then, um, that could initiate it on our end. But I still think that, um, Doty should start notifying folks and say, you know, you can submit comments. It could even be longer than sixty days if we wait until they, you know, how would I say this? We could start our own process, just get things on the website, in an email address, send that information out, and then have our communication staff do a notification, um, and then have Doty do the notifications for the agency council meetings. If you want to start immediately, because I'm, you know, we can control that process and we're the ones who are supposed to be performing the consultation. We just delegate it to Doty sometimes.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Slater. Well, that would be the thinking process right now. Perhaps, uh, a motion to, um, do those items that you outlined. And then from there, the committee could vote on it.
Mr. Chair, this is Angie Penelli.
Go ahead.
If, um, the, um, committee can also keep in mind that the budget, um, process and preparation and process is gonna begin, beginning of, um, August. So the committee will be busy with the, um, budget hearings? In the, in the process at least for a good couple of weeks. Thank you.
All right, Chair, I'm ready to make my motion then if, uh, if you're ready.
Um, yes. Sorry for the background movement.
No worries.
Uh, go, go ahead, uh, Honorable Vice Chair.
Okay, so I'll motion for a directive to the Office of the Speaker and the Office of Legislative Counsel, or the Office of Legislative Services to draft a notification on the council website, on the council Facebook page, and then also to issue a notification in the Navajo Times, the Independent, the Farmington Daily Times, and any other media they deem, uh, prudent, to notify the public that the comment period will begin as soon as we're able to set up an email address to accept the comments. And then working with Doty, maybe like a web form or a website to accept the comments. So it'll be dependent on IT setting those things... So it'll be dependent on IT setting those things up first. Maybe they can do that this week, but it's Monday and I know the notifications in the Navajo Times would have to be in like today, so I think realistically, they could set that stuff up this week and then at least the notices in the paper could go out next week. Um, so that's, that's my motion, and then, uh, the second part would be to direct DODI to develop the agency council meeting schedule, and that can take place after the summer session.
I would like to second that motion, Deo. Paul Begay.
I think for the purposes of counting the sixty days, we can't do it any earlier than when it's notified in the Navajo Times, so realistically, that would be on next Thursday. But, um, it doesn't mean that we can't start accepting comments prior to them, or prior to next Thursday either.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Colonel Mendez. I appreciate, uh, the motion and by Honorable Vice Chair Slater, and recognized the second by Honorable Paul Begay. Further discussion. If not, then, um, Mr. Moes, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Deo. Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica. Honorable Edison J. Unica. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, committee members, um... And I think, uh, Ms. Angelita Benali, uh, please coordinate with, uh, um, Ms. Patricia Gani and her staff, Derek Franklin, as well as Matthew So to coordinate, uh, the announcement so that, uh, um, it can go out by a press release as well as getting the advertisement in the Navajo Times. And in this case, and, and in this case, uh, uh, the committee's budget will be used for the advertisement, uh, in the Navajo Times.
Mr. Chair, and I will also, um, probably need just, um, assistance from the Office of Legislative Council as well as, um, DOJ for the language that will go out in the announcement in the paper.
Okay, and, and again, I guess that citation, uh, within, um, Title II that gives the authority to the committee on the coun- consultation, that would be probably one of the, um, bullet point items in that announcement.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Matthew So calling in as well. I don't, in, in addition to the notice, I, I also recommend, um, publishing Plan Six along with the notice in the paper. That way, i- it's all put out there so that people know what Plan Six is, the portion plan, and it's only about five or six pages total. That, that'll help cover your bases i- in anything that comes up. That way, you'll have the notice, you'll have the here, the, the public comment, and then you have people that can also view the portion plan in the newspaper, ideally.
Okay, thank you, um, Honorable Slater. Your thoughts on, on the recommendations?
I think that's a good idea. We should, uh, get it on the website. Ah, I'm trying to remember exactly how many pages the plan is, but I think what we can include in the motion is to study that. Is it real? I, I mean, maybe if it's not the exact plan, we can explain what the plan is, because the plan is in legislative, you know, and format, so... I think as long as the same details and content are conveyed in the paper, that's what's important. Um, so I guess I would modify my motion to include publishing the contents of Plan Six in the papers and then making sure it's available on the council's Facebook page and the council's website. And we, and the plan that was adopted, so the modified Plan Six, as people have called it.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Slater. I recognize that motion to add the, these additional items to, uh, what was previously voted on. So Chair, Honorable Paul Begay. And Deo. Kate D'Asanta.
Oh, it's the Alcatraz next, thank you.
Oh, Okusila, um, so Mr. Moes, uh, another vote on this motion to add the additional items to what we're proceeding with.
Hi, Chair. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Paul Begay.
Hey.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Unica votes green. Chair, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Let the record show a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, and the chair not voting. So then now we go to items, the new item five B, Ms., uh, Benali. Review item five B, the new five B to, uh, with the committee.
Mr. Chair, members of the, um, committee, you, um, the committee had requested to put this item on the agenda, to schedule meetings to address the implementation of the Navajo Nation education sovereignty, and this would include implementations of the Yaasi Martinez versus the State of New Mexico. And it would include the stakeholders of the Navajo Nation Board of Education, Department of the NAED Education, Navajo Nation DOJ, and Navajo Nation, uh, Office of Legislative Council. And the, um, issues and the applications would surround the, uh, tribal remedy framework, achieving educational sovereignty, also considering Navajo Nations', uh, Title X. And, uh, this would, and we would use the, um, resource and reference of the UNAM Native American Budget and Policy Institute, uh, reports that they do have on their website. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, um... So, uh, let's see. Mr. Chadet City, Mr. Ron Haven, Ms. Alexandra Cincilla, Ms. Patricia Gani, and I think, uh, we have the President of the Navajo Nation Board of Education, and possibly other members of the Board of Education on the call. Committee members, like, like, uh, again, um, we have a young mother that got the New Mexico Law and Poverty Center to file suit on her behalf. The court judge ruled in favor of the plaintiffs, and as we received the last, on June thirtieth, a hundred and seven legislations have been introduced to the New Mexico Legislature, and four have basically gone to the governor for signature. Of that, approximately, uh, five hundred and nineteen thousand went to the school districts. Of that amount, close to four hundred thousand went for pay raises for teachers. And so, uh, some of the findings of that court basically remain unfunded. And so that's the reason that, uh, the chair is really pushing for, um, the committee and NABI and the full council to make a position that will be where the Navajo Nation stands with Ms. Wilamina Yaasi. And so that's, that's the intent and purposes, because it, um, we can't... We're citizens of the state of New Mexico, and what the court has found is our children have not been given the resources to adequately prepare the young people for a career and/or to pursue post-secondary education, plus, uh, the state has seriously not funded special education. The other aspect was, uh, the court found that there was minimal effort to recruit and retain teachers. And, and so those are common issues that we, we hear about, and I think it's time that we let, um, state government know that we, we are in agreement with what the court has found. So that's the reason that, um, the strategy is to hold these, uh, the panels from June thirtieth, and then from there to proceed on how, how to go. We heard from Governor Regis Pecos with the Santa Fe Leadership Institute and those other items, that re- uh, resources to develop, um, libraries in, in tribal communities, um, to expand the broadband services as well as... The newest item that they put on the table was, um, to pursue a tuition fee waiver for all native students who reside in New Mexico and who attend state-funded post-secondary, um, institutions. So those are some items that, um, I feel like the committee is in step with, and that's how come, um, I really want to hear from our legal folks as well as our administrative folks. Um, committee members, thank you.
Mr. Chair and members of the, um, Health Education Human Services Committee, uh, I, I need to clarify if, um, the committee did, uh, motion and, uh, second to accept the report on A, we did, uh, receive a motion and a second, uh, from Mr. Slater and, um, and Delegate Vice Chair Slater and Delegate Paul Begay as a motion, uh, as a directive. And then there was subsequent additional information that was added to that directive that, uh, was also voted on. Uh, but, uh, I just needed to clarify if that was the motion to accept the report with, along with the directive, or was it just for the directive i- in what we heard?
Honorable Slater, your thoughts on, on the, the question from Legislative Director?
Um, I think since we haven't done any motions or seconds on this matter, it would be horrible just to do a quick vote on accepting the previous report.
So a new motion to accept the report? Is that what?
Yeah, so I'll offer that motion, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Slater. Honorable Paul Begay. Back to you.
Oh, Ila.
Okay, Okusila. Um, let the, the record show there's a affirmative, uh, by Honorable Paul Begay to accept the previous, uh, item five A, um, report, um, committee members. Discussion? If not, then, Mr. Moes, roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona.
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater.
Delegate Slater, green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Unica votes green. Chair, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, accept the report.
Thank you, uh, committee members. Um, um, I just want to apologize to the committee, um, for being short, and even to, uh, Satilla, um, Mr. Harrison. I'm, I'm dealing with an emergency in the Torreon area and part of Black Horse Lake Chapter Rinncon Marcus. A major hailstorm went through the area last evening, and there are, um, aspects are flooded in the ruins. Roofs are damaged, windshields on vehicles are damaged. And so in that aspect, it's, uh... We pray for rain, but sometimes it comes unletty. And so that's what I'm having to deal with this morning. Um, committee members. Um, so, um...
Nai?
Oh.
Do, do you want me to take over chairing temporarily so you can address those matters and, and just listen in, or would you prefer to keep preparing?
Um, uh, yes, if you would, uh, um, uh, Satilla, I, I've got to, uh, make contact with the Emergency Management Commission and see what, uh, we need to do to, um, address that matter that's facing the community. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. As soon as I get some of these items taken care of, I'll be back on the call. Thank you.
Understood. Okay, committee members. So, I believe we're back to the report on the educational issues in New Mexico. And the chair gave an overview. The presenters that were asked to present were Ms. Consella, Ms., uh, Mr. Abada, Mr. Haven, and Shmo Sonamaskani. So, um, I'm gonna go to them in that order. Let's hear from them and then share how identified scheduling meetings on these matters. I don't know if we'll have separate meetings or if we'll make a determination to do a, a larger work session with everyone involved. So, um, Ms. Consella, are you on the line still?
Yes. Good morning, Honorable Slater.
Are you prepared to provide a report on this section?
Thank you. Um, I mean, not really. The, uh, the agenda itself says that the, that it, this is meant to schedule meetings to address the implementation of Navajo Nation education sovereignty. So that's what I am prepared to speak to today around scheduling, but I, I, you know, I'm familiar with the case, so I can speak to it if needed. I guess I was unclear on, on the purpose in this agenda item.
No, I think scheduling, that's exactly it, but I just wanted to make sure if any of the people who are asked to participate in this item had something to say, wanted to say it. So, um, let's move on to Mr. Abada and Mr. Haven. Do you have anything to offer at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Vice Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ron Haven here. Uh, I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. Chad Abada is on the line, but he's been, I understand, working with, uh, Ms. Consella. Um, however, our office, uh, based on the work sessions, um, that you will be scheduling on this matter, our office, uh, can, can help prepare the position statement on the Navajo Nation, uh, uh, of the Navajo Nation in respect to the, uh, uh, tribal remedy framework. And, uh, we'll be glad to do that upon completion of your work sessions. So that's basically, uh, the only statement I have. I, 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 I was one of the presenters at the, uh, previous, uh, uh, work sessions you all had on this matter. So thank you, uh, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Haven. Um, Ms. Gani or Ms. Benali?
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Chad Abada, Office of Legislative Council.
Oh, um, Ms. Gani and, uh, Ms. Benali, please hold for a moment. Mr. Abada, um, you recognized?
Yes, yeah. Thank you, uh, Mr. Haven and Alex, Ms. uh, Kinsella. I appreciate that. And I, I'm also, um, I've also received a link from Chair, uh, Daniel So, which I distributed to Alex and, uh, Mr. Alex, Ms. Consella and Mr. Haven to also take a look at the tribal remedy framework that has been, uh, on the U N M website page. So, uh, that's, so as far as my part, I've been just, I, I've just been researching this issue and then also trying, um, getting my head around this whole issue. And so, um, but that's as far as I got to and I, I, I'm looking forward to the meetings that we're gonna be having. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bada. Uh, Ms. Gani and, uh, the Board of Education.
Vice Chair Slater, this is Calvin White. Um, Ms. Gani had asked me to, um, sit in on the meeting for her. She's out today and tomorrow. But as far as the request with relative to implementing Navajo sovereignty based on the tribal remedy framework, um, I know that the education has been an active participant working with the Regis Pecos in addressing these issues. So we're, we're ready to review that and get that submitted and get it organized to the new types of information that's need, that needs to be inserted. So from the operational standpoint, from, from the education, oh, that, that's where we're at. And I'll, um, have, um, our board chair speak to the board's input on this issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. White. Um, did I hear Priscilla in the background there? Okay, maybe not. So, committee members, um, I'm gonna make a recommendation here.
Slater.
Oh. Is that you?
Yes, this is Priscilla, um, Benali.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. I'm so sorry about that. I got a phone call just in the middle of when I was gonna respond. Um, good morning, um, Vice Chair Slater and members of the Hess Committee. Um, I thank you. I sincerely thank you for this being on the Hess, um, agenda. Of course, you all know that, um, this is a very important, um, lawsuit that happened for our students, um, in our areas and surrounding areas of Navajo. And I think we are, uh, you guys are right on target with your concerns. Um, I think also sitting on the Board of Education for Gallup, we also see the, um, lack of energy, the lack of funding that is to be implemented into the Martinez-Yaasi lawsuit. Um, I think the other concern of the 19 Pueblos, um, also is that there is continued talk about um, using the funding from Impact Eight to subsidize this funding. And that is a huge concern. You, you, we don't want that to happen. And I know that we've, we've discussed that in the past, but just be mindful that there is that discussion. Um, and I know that, um, we need to move forward and continue to advocate, um, on these programs and the funding, the resources that need to go into this Yaasi Martinez, um, um, lawsuit. One of the, the, the main initiative is, um, helping our children. And right now, I think there's a lot of Band-Aids that are being placed on different, um, avenues that are the concerns of the, um, plaintiffs in this lawsuit. And we need, we don't need more and no more Band-Aids. You know, and we need to really get, um, strong, oh gosh, laws, strong recommendations. And I know that a couple of months ago, you heard a report from, um, Ms. Lysandra So and from, um, um, Secretary Stewart at your meeting. And, you know, I, I really advocated for them to recognize the Indian Education Committee, um, that were present at that time and that are in leadership roles at the recommendation of Hesse and Navajo Nation OPVP's office. And their, their opinions really need to, and their recommendations really need to be recognized by PED. Um, they have a lot of concerns about what is happening with funding and, you know, how these things can be resolved. But again, their voice is being, uh, um, not being heard. Uh, but thank you to you all for continuing to, um, take the initiative to advocate for our students.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Benali, and to the other folks we asked to present and be involved in the scheduling. So, I think the chair was looking to maybe regroup internally on the efforts of the executive branch and the Board of Education and see how the legislative branch can support the positions or the issues that they've articulated. So, with, excuse me, with that said, committee members, would you be open to a work session? Or do you think we should have this as a leadership meeting? What are your thoughts? But as a part of it, my recommendation is that the DODI in consultation with DOJ and Mr. Abada and Mr. Haven would scope out these issues. I don't know if you do like a white paper or a one pager or something to that effect and get them to us in advance. So we'll be ready to discuss the matters at the, um, work session. Committee members, are people in agreement with scheduling a work session with these entities or a leadership meeting? Is there a preference? And if so, when would you desire to have such a meeting?
Vice Chair. Halona.
Thank you, Delegate Halona.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with those two, uh, directives that you're trying to submit there. We, we need to go ahead and try to get this resolved as soon, the sooner the better that we can get started on it. That's gonna be my, uh, my request, uh, Chair.
Delegate Halona, do you have a recommendation on timing? When you'd like to do this?
Well, right now, I think that if we, uh, uh, it's gonna have to come after the spring, uh, summer session, I would imagine, uh, Chair. It could start then, uh, this, the last week of this month.
I think that's, that's a good idea. That's a good idea, Delegate Halona. Um, one other consideration may be convening the Friday of summer session. If we think we might be able to get other New Mexico delegates or other delegates who might be in Winderock for the council session to participate in this so that they're having some fluency in it. But that might be chancing it too much in case we go into Friday. Ms. Benali, could you let us know what our schedule is the week succeeding the council session? Do we have anything scheduled other than our meeting right then?
Mr. Vice Chair, at this time, uh, for July 26th through 30th, um, no, there's no meetings except for the, uh, on the 28th Wednesday. It's a regular meeting of the Health Education and Human Services Committee.
Okay. Committee members, between Monday, Tuesday and Friday of that week, do you have a preference on convening in a work session? And then to the presenters, are any of those, uh, real no-go for you?
Um, Vice Chair? Question?
Yes, Delegate Begay.
Vice Chair, Halona?
Oh, sorry, Delegate Halona.
Yeah.
Come on, yell into the microphone. I gotta hear you.
I'm right next to the phone. Hey, uh, uh, I have on my schedule two regular meetings. I'm not sure. So the 27th and 28th. Um, assuming the 27th is, uh, a mistake. Can, uh, Ms. Benali, can you clarify that for me, please?
I'm sorry, what does it show on the 27th, um, Delegate Halona?
It shows a meeting, a rescheduled meeting on the 27th.
At this time, I don't have a rescheduled, um, meeting on the 27th. It's that, uh, on a calendar? Or where's that information coming from?
I, I got it on my, uh, on my calendar, on my telephone calendar. I have two.
Okay.
There's a regular session on the 28th, Hess Committee, and then I have on the 27th, it's showing a regular, it says regular meeting, but it's a rescheduled meeting, it says. On the 27th.
Okay. I haven't been informed that there is a rescheduled meeting on the 27th. However, um, it might be, um, one that might be proposed by the Chair for, to take place for the 21st. That's my best guess, but I, we would need to confirm it with, um, uh, Chair So.
Yeah, I, I think that might have been what we did. I'm not really sure, but I can remember we did reschedule some, uh, a session.
Okay, but I haven't been informed of that, um, Delegate Halona. But we can confirm it. Thank you.
Okay. Delegate Slater, I guess that'd be the, if we don't have anything 27th, I don't have anything on the 29th as well. Of course, they might be NABI scheduled for that day, but I don't have anything right now. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Delegate Halona. Let's see here. Uh, by statute, NABI would not convene on the 29th, um, because it's supposed to convene on the second and fourth Thursdays, but there may be a special NABI. So we should anticipate that. Committee members, uh, we already had one of our colleagues who had cleared his schedule for the 27th. Um, Delegate Halona, do you want to make a motion to have the work session that Tuesday, the 27th?
Honorable Slater, this is Alex with DOJ. I just wanted to share, I'm not available that day. However, um, if that's, works for everyone else, I can work with Mr. Abada to ensure that, um, we're fully prepared and I can also potentially have Mr. Harrison Rice from DOJ speak on, uh, my behalf.
Okay. Are you not available the whole day or is it just parts of the day?
Yes, unfortunately, I, I am out on sick leave that day.
Okay, um, committee members, I'm looking for a motion here, either for the 26th, the 27th or the 30th, because I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't schedule anything on the 29th just in case there is a special NABI.
Vice Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion for, um, I, I'm gonna say the 27th for right now, and then if not, we can, uh, move that to the 30th for a special meeting. Vice Chair.
Okay. Yeah, and you know, um, one option would actually be to switch our meeting on the 28th and do a special meeting on the 27th and then do our work session on the 28th. If that'd be able to accommodate Ms. Consella. And I think, you know, it really would have the ideal if we're all convening in person, you know, at DODI or in the budget finance room or something. This is something where we need to all be in the same room talking to each other.
That's what I understand, Chair. Uh, let's go ahead and make that motion to switch that meetings, uh, from the 28th to 27th and have our special meeting set for the 28th. I'll make that motion, Chair.
Is there a second, committee members? That way, everyone just coming in from the far reaches of the reservation can spend the night in Winderock and there'll be no excuse about missing our meetings.
I'll second that motion. Delegate Begay.
Thank you, Frenel. We have a motion from Delegate Halona to request a special meeting on the 27th, cancel the regularly scheduled meeting on the 28th, and in its place, conduct a work session on, I would say, the title of the same report that we have before us will include Dr. White, um, well, everyone who's on the, the presenters right now and a directive to them, um, Directive, but Delegate Holana, are you, are you interested in adopting the portion that I'd asked about to make sure we get the materials in advance? We need the, the plans that are referenced and then, I think, some recommendations.
Yes, Chair, I am.
Okay, just confirming, because you had said earlier, but the motion's changed. And Delegate Begay, are you fine with adding that in your motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. So we have the motion. Any discussion? Any further questions?
No.
Going twice? Going three times. Mr. Mose, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. So that'd be a special meeting on July 27th and a work session on July 28th, right, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernal Holana.
Long vote, green.
Honorable Pernal Holana votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Vice Chair, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Mose. Okay, committee members. The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So I'll make that motion to accept the report.
Recognized. Is there a second?
Delegate Paul Begay.
Okay, further questions or discussion? Going twice, going three times. Mr. Mose, can you proceed to a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernal Holana.
Pernal votes green.
Honorable Pernal Holana votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable, Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Vice Chair, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to 5C. Navajo Nation Council audit report of trust fund principal accounts impeding the ability to meet the demand for the Navajo Nation post-secondary financial assistance and scholarship awards. Ms. Begay, our acting controller, are you online? Ms. Begay going twice.
Miss Graham, Robert Willie from the Controller's office.
Mr. Willie, are you prepared to present on this topic?
Uh, yes, I've sent out a document. I'm not sure if you've received it. It's a memorandum that's dated today.
What time did you send it out?
I sent it to Ms. Angelina Benali, I think that was her name, at 10 o'clock. I can forward it to you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, this is Angelina Benali. I did just forward it to you. I had to do several of the meeting logistics such as finalizing the agenda and so forth. And I did send it out. A few minutes ago as the report was coming up, but I did forward it to all the members plus Rose Graham.
Oh, okay, yay.
Okay, I see it's a reply to the email you sent out on, with the call-in information. Okay, Mr. Willie, please proceed.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Members of the Health Education and Human Services Committee. Robert Willie, accounting manager of Office, the Controller, for the record. This memo is dated July 12th, 2021. It's in reference to the scholarship trust funds. It's just a written-up document indicating which trust funds are part of the scholarship. And as indicated, you wanted the audited principal balances. The only audited principal balances I have currently are as of September 30th, 2019. The 2020 audit is currently still in process, so once those become available, I'll be able to update that if the committee so wishes. But going on, the Graduate Scholarship Fund has a principal balance of $45,167,943. Tucson Electric Scholarship principal balance is $3,364,700, uh, 317, excuse me. The Scholarship Fund itself principal was $14,695,754. The NECA Scholarship Fund has a principal balance of $7,41,154. And other contribution Scholarship Fund had a balance of $1,896,850. The allocation for these funds is based on a formula, which I believe is set up via the initial establishment of these resolutions or of these funds. So the allocation is 95% of the income is used for the scholarship and then 5% is reinvested back into the fund as principal. So the, in, the principal is growing 5% every year. And that's how the allocations are set. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willie. Committee members, I'm going to go to Ms. Graham next and then open it up to questions and discussion. Is that acceptable to you all?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair.
Sounds good. Ms. Graham?
Yes, Vice Chair Slater, thank you very much. And committee members. And Mr. Willie, thank you for the information. The, we, we asked for this issue to be discussed because we have need for additional funding. The 638 contract takes care of the undergraduate students very well. But where we have great need is the graduate students. And that's entirely funded by the Navajo Nation through trust funds and general, some general funds through the sales tax revenues and the set aside. So and I am wondering if if at all possible, if we could access some of the principal or how we can, what we can do to increase the amount of funding in income that we could give to the students. That, that's my question, if you have. And I'm here with our senior accountant, Sheila Sosse.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Committee members. You've heard the presentation. Do you have questions or discussion at this time?
Chair, I have a question, Holana.
You recognize Delegate Holana.
Ms. Graham, good morning. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you, presenters, Ms. Graham. Good morning. Question on that, the money that you want to increase. How much, do you know how much we have in that account? And then also, how much more did you want to increase the amounts? What are the amounts that are awarded right now? For the graduate students and what would you like to increase that amount to, Ms. Graham?
Thank you, Delia Holana. Before I go back to Ms. Graham, committee members, any other comments or questions right now? Okay. Ms. Graham, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you. So, um, in the Graduate Trust Fund, we receive An additional $2 million, $2 to $5 million would be good. Tucson Electric is at $51,400. This is last 20, this is 21 budget ballot, budget amounts, $51,400. $100,000 would be good. In the NECA Trust Fund, it's at, we, in FY '21, we received $96,700. We used to get a million dollars a year way back before it became a trust fund. It would be good to get a million dollars. And the Vocational Trust Fund is at $176,040. Now, the amount of the Vocational Trust Fund is, is higher than that. But we share that with the the, another program. The Medicine Man Apprenticeship Program gets about 40% of those funds. So that one is unless they get some, either we get additional general fund dollars or that go to, or, or the, or that program receive additional general fund dollars for their apprenticeship program. So we do have, and graduate students, by the time they get into graduate school, they are, they are committed. Well, except during this time, during the pandemic, we've had some graduate students who had to take some time off from, from school, but prior to that. They're they're, they do very well. Majority of them graduate. Every once in a while, we might have somebody that that is, is taking a break, but majority of our graduate students complete their, make a commitment to their education and they commit, commit, complete their degrees. And so we have we have, we're trying to focus on some areas also. We have, NTU has a vet program, a veterinarian program. And then, then the college is talking about law school. And so we need to get more funding for graduate students. So, and a lot of these would create pipelines from our own K-12 through higher education into graduate, graduate education. And we already have programs like that, so we really need help at the graduate level. Thank you.
Vice Chair Slater, this is Priscilla Benali. Can I speak, please?
Yes, just one moment, Ms. Benali. Committee members, is there any other questions from yourselves right now?
Chair, hello.
All right, you're recognized, Delia Holana.
Yeah, Ms. Graham, did you, you didn't give us an, what is the average amount that these graduate students are getting? Chair?
Sorry about that, sir. Um, graduate students, if they're a part-time graduate student, they will receive $750 per course. So if they're, if they're taking two courses, then it'll be 1,500. And then a full-time graduate student with full need, they'll get $500, $500,000, $5,000 per term. So 10,000 per year. And if they are, if their need, financial need is less than $5,000, it'll be 2,500 per term, so that would be 5,000 per year. And our need for graduate students is $10 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Is that $10 million just for one year or would it be several years that would be needed?
$10 million a year.
Okay, and how many graduate students would that supply, say, for this year?
For one year. We we were funding only at 50% right now. When you apply for Navajo Nation Scholarship, you have a 50% chance of getting funded. So that would fund at least 3,000 students per year. And then we could even increase the amount with additional funding.
Ms. Graham, and so for this year, how many students are you looking at funding?
We are looking at 150 students. Part-time and full-time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graham. That's all the questions I have, Chair.
Thank you, Delia Holana. Any other committee members? Okay, Ms. Benali?
Thank you again, Vice President Slater, for allowing me. As good intentions as Ms. Graham has, I think it would have been also, I'm not think, I, it should have been this, this request. I would have really appreciate it being presented to the Navajo Nation Board of Education first, before it went to Hess. At this time, I don't know about this request and the funding that is being requested for. And I just, that's my, that, I would have liked to ask more questions also about it. So Vice Chair, I just want to be transparent about this, and I think it should have been a presentation that should have been, that, that should have come to the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benali, noted. Committee members, are there any other discussions or questions? If not, I'm gonna offer a couple of comments. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, this is Angelina Benali. I believe that this information and the discussion in relevance to the I believe that this information and the discussion in relevance to the scholarships and financial assistance to students is in preparation for the budget session. And so, that was primarily to prepare and get the information to, you know, to Ms. Graham's office so that they can better plan and present a more realistic budget for FY 2022. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Finali. Ms. Graham, you said that you received $758,000 of income from the Graduate Scholarship Fund. Is that correct?
Yes, $758,900.
So, Mr. Willie, if you're still on, it says the Graduate Scholarship Fund has $45,167,943 in it. Why are they getting a return that's like under 2%?
I would have to consult with the Investment Section on it. They're the ones that calculate that. I don't, I don't have that information right now currently. Each one of these funds, I believe, has its own established resolution of how it's supposed to be invested. But I think the majority of them have the 95%, 5% rule. There is also the investment fees that need to be offset against that same income too. So, that might be a possibility of that also too. So, I'd have to look into that and apologize, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Willie. And then, Ms. Graham, you said you used to receive a million dollars per year. And I thought that that was in reference to the NECA Scholarship.
Yeah.
Correctly from NECA, or was that the income from this fund?
That was directly from NECA. NECA used to give a million-dollar dividend to the Scholarship Office, to the Navajo Nation. And it came to the Scholarship Office when it was a dividend. And, and then about maybe 15 years ago or so, the Navajo Nation Council decided to make it a trust fund. Or maybe the administration, somebody decided to make it a trust fund. So, after it became, it became a trust fund, the, the amounts are less than a million dollars. So, I'll, I'll get the history on that with definite dates and all, if, if you need that. But that was the reason why it was, it was a million dollars a year.
Okay, and then, what is the annual, say, for your, for your college need? You said the graduate need is about $10 million.
Yeah, that, that's where we, we have the most need is for graduate students.
But, I mean, are we, we're not funding every single college student, are we, right now?
No, we're not. We're, we're funding only half.
So, what is the need for our college students?
For, to, if we were to fund everybody, we need at least $50 million per term. If we're just looking at the fall and spring traditional term. But we now have a lot of schools that go year-round. We have a lot of online students. They finish one program and then they start another one. They go year-round. So, there's, there's all, higher education has significantly changed, so. But if we're, majority of them are in the fall-spring semester timeframe.
So, for those two semesters, it'd be $100 million annually?
Yeah, if we're to fund everybody.
And then, of the students that we fund at the undergrad level, how many of them end up obtaining the degrees that they're pursuing?
We have about 40% success rate. Meaning, some of them get away from full-time and then they go to work and do something else. And then, they come back within about a year or two or later, or they go part-time. Undergrad is, numbers are, they're not, they're not consistent. Majority, or at least 40% of them are not consistent, consistently in school. But the graduate students, they're, the majority of them can finish graduate school.
Okay. And then, in terms of funding these different scholarship funds, are there set-asides or annual contributions to the graduate, the TEP one, the Scholarship Fund, the NECA one, and then the other Scholarship Fund?
We have the Navajo Nation Teacher Education Funding, which is general funds. That one, we receive $340,000 a year. This was at $500,000. And it should be growing. But every time the, the Navajo Nation has some budget cuts or they, and this is the, the program that they usually take from because they didn't get all the other numbers and they think there's a lot of money in there. So, they take from the, the Teacher Education Funds. And, and that's the only funding that actually can be, can be like that. And then, there's the Navajo Nation Set Aside, which is at $3.5 million a year. And then, there's the, we have the corporate, what we call the Corporate Funds. When the Navajo Nation has, enters into an agreement with companies, energy companies, they ask for some funding for scholarship. So, that amount is at $2,205,204. And then, we have the External Grant, the Higher Education, Higher Education Grant, which is at $13 million. In FY '21, we, we received a slight increase at $13,863,436, which, which is, majority is used for pass-through as scholarship dollars. We have five offices throughout the Navajo Nation as well as the Administration Office and Personnel of 27, 27 employees. So, we use the 638 funds for Personnel Operations and Scholarship.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graham. Committee members, is there further questions or discussion? Hearing none, the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
May I ask for the Controller through the committee? Is, Mr. Willie is gonna come back with some, some numbers, right? He's gonna go talk to the Investment Committee. And a recommendation on how much the income of the Graduate Trust, at least the Graduate Trust Fund, could be increased.
Ms. Graham, it'd be up to the committee to include that in their motion to request that of the Controller's Office. Committee members, is there a motion to accept the report?
Mr. Chair, I, I got an answer if you, if the committee so pleases.
Okay, Mr. Willie.
Okay, the, the income that is based off of, for the budgets, is actual income that, and dividends that actually come into the nation. So, if you have a, a loss or a gain, those are not actual dollars that are returning to the nation. Those are increases in the value of the stock. So, we only use the actual amounts that do come back to the Navajo Nation. So, that's how the income is determined. And it's throughout all the funds that that's determined. I also looked up one of the resolutions which was brought up, which is the NECA one. And it does indicate that all principal will be, any contributions made by any entities and any appropriations by the council. So, once it gets into the fund, it's principal. And the resolution states that, that fund income, 4% of the market shall be used on scholarships on an annual basis. So, that answers that million-dollar question. So, a million dollars does come in from NECA, but it's considered principal and only a portion of it is available for scholarships. I hope that helps clarify some of these questions that you have. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Willie. Yeah, I, I have a lot more questions, but I think the fundamental issue is the amount of funding. So, if we just have $100 million in annual undergraduate need, you know, we'd need to have an endowment of over a billion dollars to even get close to funding that amount. And then, that is not even considering the graduate students. So, it's a lot of need out there. And our government doesn't have the money to cover all of it. So, we have to make trade-offs and do the best that we can to support our students. I guess for the committee's information, I'm workshopping the prior scholarship endowment legislation that I'd introduced and hope to reintroduce that or enter it as a strike-all. And I hope that that will make a dent in some of this. But this has been very informative from the graduate aspect to understand the need there and maybe tweak the legislation that I'm developing, or redeveloping. Committee members, the Chair is open to a motion to accept the report. And if there's follow-up that's desired, please state it in your motion. Thank you. Yes, Delia Holona.
Yeah, one more really quick question for Mrs. Graham.
Okay.
Mrs. Graham? On the amount of money and the funding that have been accumulated over the years, say, in a five-year term, how much money will we, we be needing for the amount of funding that you are giving out? Are you taking also into consideration the rates of inflation with that amount? And are they increasing over the years or has it just been the same amount? Ms. Graham?
Thank you for your question, sir. The amount has been the same for about 20 years. About 20 years ago, we did a slight increase. We increased the Chief Manuelito Scholarship from 3,000. It was at 235. And then, we increased the undergraduate to 2,500 from 2,000. So, we have not increased much at all in awards to students.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graham. And so, I'll, we'll, we'll have more questions later on, on our next top discussion. Thank you, Ms. Graham. I, I just was also curious about in the, in the next five years, what will those numbers be looking like? That's, that's the other thing I was trying to figure out here. I know they're gonna be increasing, but we'll, we'll have to save that for another day. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Delia Holona. Committee members, are there more questions or discussion? The Chair will entertain a motion to accept the report.
Just hold on, I'll motion to accept the report.
Is there a second, committee members? Committee members, is there a second? Mr. Rose, can you do a roll call?
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul McGee Jr., Honorable Prenal Holona.
Holona's present.
Thank you. Honorable Paul Russell Slater, present. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Honorable Edison J. Winika. Chair, I do see Honorable Paul McGee and Honorable Charlene So on the line here, but it must have some difficulties. I do see their names on.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I, I'm in favor.
Okay. We're doing a roll call right now, Honorable So. Honorable Paul McGee.
Delegate Paul McGee votes green. Paul McGee is present and also voting green. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll do the roll call, accept the report now. Oh, we need a second, we need a second, folks.
Yeah, we, we, we need a second though, in order to, okay. So, committee members, Delegate Holona motioned to accept the report from the Controller's Office and from the Scholarship Office. But we need a second and then we need to vote.
Second, Winika.
Okay, we have a motion from Delegate Holona, a second from Delegate Winika. Committee members, any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mr. Rose, please do a vote on accepting the report. Hearing no discussion, Mr. Rose, please do a vote on accepting the report.
All right, sir. Honorable Paul Begay.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Holana?
Honorable, green.
Honorable Holana votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable S. Daniel E. So. Honorable S. J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable S. J. Winika votes green. Vice Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to item five D, Report slash Update the Closure of Ani Winika Long-Term Care Center. And the presenter is Mr. Wayne Clark, Indian Board Member, and then Mr. Regina Yasi from our Division of Social Services. Um, do we have Ms. Yasi on the line? Ms. Yasi going twice. Mr. Clark, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Delegate Winika, Delegate Winika, do you want to proceed with the presentation even though Ms. Yasi is not here?
Uh, are you talking to me, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Wayne?
Uh, I'm talking to Delegate Winika.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, uh, Vice Chair, I, I'd like to at least get the information on it. Uh, because I got the information saying that, uh, um, the center was closed. And, um, uh, I got, uh, some of the information from Mr. Clark. So I would appreciate it if we could, um, uh, make a report on it and then we can go from there and see what our decision will be, uh, whether to pursue it or maybe we don't need to. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clark, you're recognized. Please proceed with your report.
Uh, thank you, Chair, uh, and Committee, yeah, so, yeah. Uh, I just wanna make a report on, uh, on what, what happened and what information we got, uh, at the Navajo Land Nursing Home. Um, on, uh, July third, uh, my staff and myself, we got some calls from residents that, uh, wanted to be transferred to, uh, Navajo Land Nursing Home throughout the weekend. And we were told by some of the elders' family that wanted to be, uh, wanted their loved ones to be transferred here on the third and fourth of the weekend. And I did get calls from some of them, uh, uh, some of the calls were referred to me by my, uh, RNs, my licensed nurses, if it's okay to transfer some residents from Ani Winika. Uh, we, all we were told was that it was closed because of, uh, uh, staff becoming, uh, positive at, uh, Ani Winika. And that's the only information we got. And that was the reason why they wanted their families to be transferred to the Navajo Land Nursing Home. So, um, we, we'll have to continue following the CDC and CMS, Center for Medicare, Medicare's, uh, regulation. And as we all know, the pandemic's still around, COVID-19's still around. And we have to continue following the, uh, CMS's regulation by, by, uh, quarantine anybody that comes, uh, that now wants to be admitted at the nursing home here at Shinley. We have to continue following the fourteen, ten to fourteen days. We have to make sure they have their shots, both of their shots. And we gotta make sure that, uh, they, they have some rapid tests done, they're negative. Uh, those are some of the protocols we gotta continue following. And we could not accept uh, any of the calls that, on Saturday, the third and the fourth, to admit anybody from there, basically because what we heard is that, that Sage Memorial is the one that shut down the, uh, nursing home on the second Friday, July. And that's all we heard anyway, so we couldn't bring them in here. And I want the, the, uh, the Committee to be aware of it in case somebody does complain that, that, uh, we couldn't admit anybody. You know, during that time, because we don't know what they're gonna be carrying into our facility and, and also to our staff. Uh, everybody has been negative here. We get, uh, staff get tested every morning before we come in. We got a rapid test we do. We test the elders every week. So that's just to prevent from anybody getting positive or anybody else coming in or somehow the, uh, COVID-19 is coming in. So we have to be very careful about that and of course, you know, I'm the responsible person that makes sure that, uh, protect the elders that we have here and my staff. So if, and my, 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 my information to you, uh, Shinan Tai, is just to be aware that assured that, that we have to follow these, these regulations continuously until CMS says it's okay to open it back up completely. So that's one of the reasons why I wanna give a report on that, that, that we have to continue doing that. Any new admission that we bring in, that's some of the protocols we follow, that we have to continue following. But in Nagi, Bahjopaya, Nimasandoni Che. Because it's not over the Nishiki hat, are the, the Nahili Kona, Nihibini, nah, Bahasthe. Che yo, Shajopai, Shnihla, Ako. Ako, even in, uh, I, I have to continue following those regulations, Shinan Tai. Ako, Edo, Nchilodechnen, Ben Yeddo, Sut Aani, Hutet Ako, Sizne, Nixidilwo. Edo, Shemasandosche Che, Sheke, Edo, Itto, Tatablne, Yado, Gasa, Taanil, At Ako, La. Ado, Ahod, Nslahod, Aditno, Bantik, Haay, Benina, Abenla, J. Shinan Tai, Nchilodechnen, Oe, Khaek, Itto, just to be aware of it, that we are, yes, admitting. We're, we're nearly full right now. And we wanna continue bringing the elders in and, and bringing the capacity back in here. Ako, Edo, Shat, Eshli, Shinan Tai, Ako, yeah. Thanks for listening to me, Nana.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Clark. Committee members, comments or questions based after Mr. Clark's presentation?
Vice Chair, Winika.
You're recognized, Delegate Winika.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair and members of the Committee. Yeah, I, I was just a little bit concerned because, um, uh, those, uh, people that were using the facility, that my main concern is they have no place to go. I really feel this should have been prevented. And that's the reason why I think of what, uh, Mr. Clark is saying is, uh, very accurate, that he really, uh, makes sure that, uh, uh, those, uh, people that are at, uh, at, uh, nursing home are cared for, especially in reference to the, uh, pandemic. And the, the same cares have been, uh, applied at, uh, Ani Winikas. So that's the reason why I don't know if we need to, uh, address the, uh, the person that runs the, the, the center over there. And then also Regina Yazi should have been aware of that and provided, uh, leadership that is needed. And I'm just really concerned about that, uh, because, uh, those people that were at the center, uh, some of them might have gotten, uh, virus and they were sent home with that and I don't know if it's gonna spread again. I'm just really, uh, a, a little bit worried about that. So I don't know how we can, uh, directly address this. That makes it re- really hard when our responsibility is just policymaker and we can't directly address some of these items. And we have to rely on the President's Office and the people that are in those positions like, uh, Regina Yazi. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, this is Angelita Ben Ali. I did call, um, Regina Yazi at the Family, um, Division of Social Services, um, Family, Department of Family Services. And she is on a conference call. Her assistant went to go see if she was on this, um, conference call. However, our participant list doesn't, um, list her specifically, but there are numbers. And I believe that she might be one of the, the callers that are listed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ben Ali. Thank you, Chair. Um, Committee members, th- this wasn't a mentor agenda, so I think you have to provide some deference to the program for not being on, but my strong recommendation would be to, uh, Delegate Winika to make a motion to accept the report and in that motion, issue a directive to the Division of Social Services and outline whatever you would like in that motion. Um, you can have them back before us on, uh, we have a reg- regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday. You could ask them to come back. You could ask for a written report in the interim. Um, there's a few different options available to you, but that's my recommendation.
Uh, thank you, uh, Vice Chair. Uh, this is Delegate Winika. Let's go ahead and make a motion to accept the report, um, uh, with, uh, recommendation to have, uh, uh, Re- Regina Yazi and her office come before the Hess Committee on Wednesday to provide additional report and, um, also to, uh, give us, uh, information on how many of the, uh, people that were using the facility, facility were tested positive, including the staff. And, uh, if, uh, she could do it also in a written report to us, I would really appreciate that and then we can go from there. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Committee members, do we have a second?
Hold on, I'll second that.
Okay. Committee members, is there further discussion? Discussion going twice. Discussion going three times. Mr. Rose, can you proceed to a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernal Zalona?
Holana votes green.
Honorable Pernal Zalona votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable Edison J. Winika.
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Vice Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Thank you. Finished with reports now. And we'll move on to new business as there is no old business. Your legislation, uh, one oh seven hyphen twenty-one, actually, the Health Education Human Services Resources Development and the Dietic Committees and the Navajo Nation Council reaffirming the request of the Governor of New Mexico to activate the Napa Development Corporation, leading a healthcare, Indian managed care entity to increase medical resources available to Navajo people during the COVID-19 state of emergency. Is there a motion to consider the legislation?
Mr. Chair, uh, the, the sponsor is not present.
Oh.
Uh, that's, um, Chair Daniel So. And there are no, um, co-sponsors indicated or who have signed on. Mr. Vice Chair, I'm contacting, um, Delegate, um, Chair Daniel So right now.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't anticipate there being any questions or discussion, um, because it's something we've considered before. But the the Chair will recognize a, um, a motion, I apologize, a motion, was that Delegate Holana motioned?
Yes, I did. Second, Winika.
No, recognize the second Delegate Winika. Mr. Haven, are you still on the line or Mr. Rico?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
In, in the rules, does it say that the sponsor has to be present?
Um, um, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, um, and also members of the Committee, um, I, I, I think you would have a problem running into this issue with, uh, sponsor being present in the event there are questions, because under your rules, it does indicate that if there are questions, it must be directed to the sponsor. If you don't have any questions, I, I would imagine you would do a motion in the second and, and vote on it, provided that there are no questions. I, I don't see a particular issue with respect to the rules that you're asking about. Uh, thank you.
Committee members, do we have questions or discussion on this legislation?
Uh, Delegate Flair?
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, uh, the Committee, Committee knows about this issue well. And that we've been trying to work on this to get it passed for several, several months, maybe a year. Um, I, I don't have any questions. I, I would just rather see it moved through again to pass it. That's, that's my, uh, my request there.
Thank you, Delegate Holana. Uh, Committee members, any questions or discussion? Questions or discussion going twice? Questions or discussion going three times? Uh, Mr. Rose, can you proceed to a roll call vote on legislation one oh seven twenty-one?
Yes, sir. Honorable. Oh, it's okay. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernal Zalona?
Holana votes green.
Honorable Pernal Zalona votes green. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel E. So. Honorable S. J. Winika, green. Honorable S. J. Winika votes green. Vice Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Okay, seven B says, schedule a Hess work session regarding legislation ninety-five twenty-one. Um, I believe I was the one who motioned to have that work session. And we need to identify a date to meet with the Board and then the Department of Health and the Indian Health Service. So Committee members, um, the Chair is open to a recommendation on that. We have switched our work sessions for, um, the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth. So we'll have a regular meeting on the twenty-seventh and then we'll have a work session regarding the state of New Mexico educational issues on the twenty-eighth. One idea may be to do a morning and afternoon deal. One of those work sessions could be in the morning, the other one could be in the afternoon. Another is that Friday is open. And then thereafter, I think we're getting into the month of August. So the Chair is open to conversation and ideas about when to convene on this work session. Delegate Winika, you're recognized as long as that muting issue is taken care of.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and members of the Committee. I think your recommendation is good if we can, uh, do it on the afternoon of the twenty-eighth. Uh, because I think, uh, the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth, we need to be looking at, um, the Ridgefield Storm. So my recommendation would be to, uh, do the, uh, work, I mean, the, the work, yeah, the work session on the afternoon of the twenty-eighth.
Okay. So I guess I'll make a proposition right here, and we'll just have the discussion all at once. Delegate Monika, you're saying to have the 9521 work session the afternoon of the 28th, which means that the New Mexico Education Matters work session would be the morning of the 28th. And then you're proposing to have the Richfield Dormitory site visit take place on the 30th. Is that correct?
Chair, but I was just saying that because it depends. I don't know, we might be able to do the Richfield earlier. But even then, I think we could still have the work session for this one on the 28th. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, Delegate Begay, Chanelle, or, you know, you've asked for this up in Utah, so my request to you is, are you comfortable with that scheduling on the 30th? Delegate Begay?
Ms. Vice Chair?
Yes.
This is Angelita Benelli. The the meeting that Delegate Begay wants to schedule regarding Richfield Dormitory at Richfield, Utah, he does want the committee to go out there and tour, at least tour the dorm. However, if it's going to be a regular or special meeting of the Hess, it does need to take place, it needs to be initiated at a nearby On Navajo Nation facility. And the closest, I think, chapter is one of the chapters up there in Utah. And then the committee members would, along with legislative staff and individuals, they would take the, on the agenda, would indicate a tour of Richfield Dormitory, and they would leave the chapter to go toward the dormitory and maybe have some discussion about the facility and then return to the chapter to close the, close the meeting, unless the tour is scheduled at the end of the agenda, and then they can, you know, after the tour, they can leave. But I just thought I'd let you know about that. And the only other exception is under 183, it has about meetings and quorums that no meeting shall be held outside the Navajo Nation unless written permission of Speaker of the Navajo Nation Council, provided that funds are available, and further provided that the meeting is with a legislative body of another sovereign. What we could also do, and we can discuss that when we get to see, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Benelli. Let's see here, so I mean, Richfield is, you know, four hours in reservation, so the idea of having us go from a chapter to the the dormitory doesn't really make any sense, but let's see here. Chanelle, are you on the line again?
Yes, Vice Chair, Delegate Begay.
So Delegate Monika had brought up the idea of touring Richfield on the 30th. Is that a date that's acceptable to you, or do you have another idea?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the Hess Committee of, the 30th, I believe, is on a Friday. I'm not sure exactly how their schedules are. But my my thought is it would probably be better to do it beginning of the week, when we know that people are there. And also, because of the length of travel, we probably need a travel day before that. So I'm not exactly sure how, when that will happen. If this month is kind of locked up, I think perhaps maybe next month would be a better time to do it. My thought is it'd be good to do it kind of right away and get it out of the way, but if the scheduling is kind of all jammed up for the month, possibly next month would be a better time to do it. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, Chanelle. The consideration really settles on the week after council. This week doesn't seem to be available, and then, of course, we need to reserve next week for council. So we had motioned to have our special meeting on the 27th, and then a work session on the New Mexico Educational Matters on the 28th. We were reserving the 29th for Navi, and then Delegate Monika had brought up the prospect of having the Richfield meeting on the 30th and doing the work session on I apologize, on 95, yeah, 9521, the afternoon of the 28th. So Delegate Monika, it sounds like the 30th is open again. And then Delegate Begay, if you want to convene earlier in the week, the last date that's earlier in the week in the month of July is the 26th. So that would have to be your motion if you were going to pursue that. Otherwise, we'd be going into the month of August, and we can also punt the Richfield Agenda item to this Wednesday so that maybe Delegate Begay, you can make contact with them, figure out if the 26th makes sense, or going to August makes more sense.
Vice Chair, Delegate Begay.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair, members of committee. I think I'll go ahead and make contact with Richfield Residential Hall and see if the July 30th will work for them. And I'll do that as soon as I can so that we'll have an answer for that. So I think that's the only time that is available right now to me, because other meetings will take precedence over this travel out of, off the reservation. So let me, let me contact Richfield Residential Hall and see if July 30th will work, and I'll get back with you. Thank you.
Okay, so you're still looking at the 30th, that Friday, not the 26th?
Yes, 30th is good.
Okay. Well, then Delegate Monika, I think that clarifies. I'll recognize your motion for having the work session on 9521, the afternoon of the 28th. Committee members, is there a second?
A second Delegate Begay.
A second Delegate Begay. Committee members, further questions or discussion?
Chair, what time in the afternoon on the 28th? Will we make it one?
Yes. It's fine with me.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, are the, if the work session's going to start at nine or 10, because I think there's going to be a lot of materials to go over for the education portion of the work session. So if you start at nine, and at least it'll give it three, maybe four hours up to one o'clock?
Yeah, let's we'll go back and revise, or my recommendation, thank you, Ms. Benelli, that's a good point. Second, was there someone in the background there who was saying? Oh, here, Delegate So, Chair, Shanae.
Oh, Cecilia. This, for your information, I'm going to drop a request for Hess, BNF, and Navi to establish the Navajo Nation position on supporting and endorsing the tribal framework. I had already emailed Mr. Chad Abada to start that particular process. So in that aspect, the other parts of the items of whether we would support the tuition fee waivers and those items, I think it can be covered, committee member. The reason I'm really pursuing this is because when the interim Indian Affairs Committee meets in Gallup, I would, the ideal thing is to present that legislation to really force the New Mexico Legislature to address funding the aspects of the Yasi Martinez. And I don't want to just, you know, keep delaying it. And that way, in the month of December, then, the Legislative Services Committee will be drafting proposed legislations for the New Mexico Legislature. And if we could have a draft, then we won't be trying to hustle around come January 17th of 2022. So that's the thoughts I have regarding that aspect, committee members, and thank you. I'm pulled over on the highway. We're basically requesting the State of New Mexico Emergency Management Office, as well as Navajo Nation Emergency Management Office to come do assessment. We'll be establishing the Incident Command Post. More than likely, we'll do a special, two special chapter meetings, one over at White Horse Lake and then one over at Torio, to be able to access the emergency funds. I've asked staff of President Nez to basically declare an emergency for the two chapter areas. So that's where I'm at, committee members, and thank you for proceeding with the business of Hess this one.
Thank you, Chair, and good luck in those endeavors. So I guess hopefully on the 28th, then, that legislation will be crafted and drafted, and we'll just be discussing its contents and making sure it's ready to move forward. But I feel like we've stayed up to date and abreast of all these issues because of your leadership, and so, you know, we just need to kind of finalize the wording, or we'll make sure it's the strongest product, and we'll do that at the work session if it needs to be done. Do you remember the date? I cannot remember when the committee is going to be convening in Gallup? Or is that TBD?
August 4, 5, and 6.
4, 5, and 6, okay. Okay. Well, I guess it's really the earliest date that we can have the work session.
Yeah. That's all right.
And, you know, if the legislation's done and is able to be considered by our committee on the 27th, power to us, we can always pass it out and then still have that work session and invite other delegates or committees who may need to consider it at Navi that Thursday. And that's good that we're keeping the Thursday open so that you can have a special Navi so that we can pass it out before that meeting. Okay, committee members, so we have a motion to convene on 9521 at 1:00 PM on the 28th. And then I would ask the motioning parties to modify their motion to clarify that the educational work session will begin at 8:30 AM on the 28th.
Yes, Chair, this is Winika. I'll go ahead and modify that for the, that earlier meeting to start at 8:30.
I think it was Delegate Begay who had the second. Do you consent to that? Delegate Begay, do you consent to the modification? Okay, I'm going to look for another second. We haven't heard from Delegate Begay. Is there a second?
Vice Chair, Honorable Begay online, but he might be having difficulties with his phone, but I did see him on the screen here. Honorable Paul Begay Jr., do you hear it?
Yes, I'm back online, thank you.
Okay, Delegate Begay, Chanelle, the question that we have for you is, do you consent to a modification to clarify that the educational work session on the 28th will start at 8:30 AM?
Yes, I concur with that, thank you.
Okay. Committee members, any further discussion on the motion? Discussion going twice? Discussion going three times. Mr. Moes, please proceed to a vote.
Hi, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernal Zalona.
No, it's green.
Honorable Pernal Zalona votes green. Honorable Colorado, Colorado Slater.
I won't vote on this because I'm resigned.
Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel E. So.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel E. So votes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika, green. Honorable Edison J. Winika votes green. Vice Chair, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, committee members, thank you, Mr. Moes. So we're on 7C. We basically already handled that. Delegate Begay is going to reach out to the Residential Hall and see if they're available on the 30th. And if they are, he'll report back to us on Wednesday, so we'll move item C, just let it roll over to Wednesday's agenda. Committee members, announcements?
Chair, Vice Chair, Winika.
Yes, Chair.
Vice Chair, I'd like to request to readdress legislation 0107-21. Our Legislative Council, Ron Haven, has a concern on that. Maybe he can go ahead and explain the reason before we recall it. I would appreciate that, Vice Chair.
Okay. Mr. Haven, you recognized?
Vice Chair, Slater, I appreciate your time, and I do want to address the committee real briefly. I know that you are going to be adjourning here pretty soon, but before you do, I would recommend that the committee recall the item B on legislation 0107-21. And the sponsor wasn't present at the time, and he is now And the sponsor wasn't present at the time and he is now back with the committee. So I would strongly advise that you recall this and go ahead and have him make his presentation and, and then you can conclude with that. I really certainly would appreciate that. And a presentation by the sponsor, I, I think would be, uh, something that would be appropriate under the circumstances. This matter will be moving on towards the committee. So thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haven. Committee members, well, actually, first, Chair So, are you, are you still on the line?
Yes, yes. Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. I guess honestly, the best way to do this would be to suspend the floor rules, to recall Item 7A legislation, 10721. The chair would entertain such a motion.
Yeah, Vice Chair, this is Wenika. I'll go ahead and suspend the floor rules and recall Legislation 0107-21.
Okay, is there a second?
Delegate Paul Begay votes second.
Okay, we have a motion from Delegate Wenika, a second from Delegate Holana. I think he snuck in there, Delegate Begay. And committee members, is there questions or discussion on the motion? Questions or discussion going twice? Okay. Mr. Moes, can you proceed to a roll call vote on the motion to suspend the floor rules to consider Legislation 7, or Item 7A, 10721?
Hi, Chair. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Valona?
Valona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Valona votes green. Honorable Charlene So?
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Daniel Eso?
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel Eso votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wenika? Honorable Edison J. Wenika votes green. Vice Chair, a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, to recall 0107-21.
Okay, committee members. Can I get a motion to consider the legislation now?
Motion, Holana.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the title into record?
We, we already, I already read it the first time around, so it's been...
Okay, all right, okay.
Thank you. We have a motion from Delegate Holana. Do we have a second?
Second, Wenika.
Second, Delegate Begay.
Delegate Begay, you got to speed up. Second from Delegate Wenika. Does the committee desire a presentation? We have the sponsor here. Presentation going... Okay. Chair So, you have 20 minutes. That's all I'm giving you. Please proceed.
Cecilia, Honorable Vice Chair Slater, I don't, I committee members. I'd say by here, Winston. And, um, the, the main thing with this is, you know, we, we adopted the legislation and it went across the street and there was a question. There was a veto, then we sponsored the override and there was a question on the votes. And the reason for the veto was a question on a difference of opinion on passive enrollment or active enrollment. And Natani Development Corporation as well as Molina Healthcare, in on the State of New Mexico side, there was already work sessions to draft a contract where then the partnership of Natani Development and Molina Healthcare would sign the contract with the State of New Mexico Department of Health. And they even were advertising a program manager to be hired within the State of New Mexico. And of course, the legislation got vetoed and there was a question of whether we had enough votes to override the veto. And as such, the governor said, I need a letter from Speaker Begay, I mean Speaker Damon and President Nez, concurring that the state could proceed. The letter was signed by Speaker and taken across the street. That never occurred. So in this aspect, and the veto was because of the type of enrollment. And so now Natani Development and Molina Healthcare are saying, okay, we'll abide with, with what the president is asking. We'll do active enrollment. And so that's the clarification on this legislation. And so that's where we are proceeding with this. And again, we want to make sure that, and, and, and the whole basis is, is basically to provide extra personnel within the State of New Mexico to help in care for the young and the elderly and those that are without transportation or are, you know, too frail to, to laundry. Those types of certified nursing assistants would be employed as well as the, this particular program would also allow Medicare expenditures for traditional medicine. And so in, in that aspect, that's what we're really wanting to do. The other, other folks that are basically authorized to operate in the New Mexico portion, they're regulated by the Public Regulatory Commission and that's where they got their license. But the, the one we've seen and on the ground is they're not answerable to anybody. And the monies that they earn go to outside entities. Well, Natani Development is basically saying there would be income. We could add revenues back to the Navajo Nation if we could operate. And so that's how come this legislation is renewed. And I really appreciate the committee's endorsement so that this legislation can go forward. Thank you, Vice Chair Slater, presiding chair.
Yes, this is Chair. I'm asking for motioning parties if we can do the same, proceed with the same process as we have with the chapter meeting minutes where anyone requesting for a meeting minute.
Thank you, Chair. So Delegate Begay, you might be unmuted if you're listening to a chapter meeting or somebody is here. Committee members, is there questions or discussion on the legislation? Committee members, did you just hear what I said?
Begay here, Vice Chair.
Yes, Chair, would you hear you?
Okay. Got a fat thumb over here with the speaking button. Questions or discussions, colleagues? Going twice?
No questions. Thank you, Delegate So, for that presentation.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, hearing no questions or discussion. Mr. Moes, can you proceed to a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Valona?
Valona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Valona votes green. Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Daniel Eso, green.
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel Eso votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wenika, green. Honorable Edison J. Wenika votes green. Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Vice Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moes. Delegate So, are you there? Charlene So? Okay, well, we're now at item eight, close to meeting announcements adjournment.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, this is Angelita Benelli. I'm going to need your signature on the committee report.
Okay, I'm going to leave for Winderock very soon. So if you can email or text me or whatever is best, just to let me know when it's written up. But I'll only be able to be there today. I can't be there tomorrow.
We'll have it ready. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, committee members, I'm not hearing any announcements, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Motion, Paul Begay.
Second, Deputy So.
Okay. You have a motion from Delegate Begay and a second from Delegate So. Mr. Moes, can you please proceed to a roll call vote?
Yes, sir. Vice Chair, who's second again, please?
Chair So.
Okay, all right, we did a vote. Okay, Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Valona? Honorable Pernell Valona? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Charlene So? Honorable Daniel Eso?
I vote green.
Honorable Daniel Eso votes green. Honorable Edison J. Wenika?
I vote green.
Honorable Edison J. Wenika votes green. Honorable Pernell Valona?
Valona votes green.
Honorable Pernell Valona votes green. Honorable Charlene So? Vice Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, adjourned at 12:14 PM.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'm sorry.
Vice Chair Slater, this regarding the work session, the process is we ask for a work session and off reservation travel and that way we don't have to meet at a nearby chapter. That's the process that Resource and Development used when they went to the ranches in Colorado. And that's the process we use when we met at the Pete Domenici Health Sciences, building, when we met regarding the metals research that UNN basically conducts. So that, that should be the process that we will use for the 20, the 30th, committee members. Thank you, Vice Chair Slater. Appreciate the work and committee members. Thank you for hanging together and basically moving forward with the issues that were on the agenda today.
Ten-four, Chair. Thank you and good luck to all of your efforts to help your people out there from the hailstorm.